Good morning. It's Monday, March the 23rd, 2015. And I call upon the Department of Commerce, Court, and Order. Today we have Jeff Ponder from the First Baptist Church from Muslin. We will do an indication. If you will stand, please. And remain seated.
Father, we thank you so much for a gorgeous, gorgeous morning that you've given us. God, we know that every day is a gift from you. We're grateful for the day. And thank you so much for gathering us together. And I just pray over this meeting, Father, that, God, that you would give us wisdom and discernment and guidance as we make decisions that affect so many people's lives. And, Father, I pray that you would bestow on us the wisdom that comes from you. And, Father, again, thank you so much for just the day you've given us. And I pray, Father, that our lives today might honor you and that everything that we say and do might bring glory to you in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
The first order of business is approval of the minutes brought in March. Now, I'm showing you how to come to this court meeting.
Would you have one suggested correction, Judge? On the minute, Agenda Item 10, Ag. Producers Co-op. I abstained. We'll just let the record show I've seen the lack of information provided on the agenda items. Thank you. That correction, why not?
Make a motion to approve. Minute is correct.
Second. Have a motion, second, all in favor. Raise your hand.
Number two vouchers to consider, and after all, the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county monitor during the period of March 4th, 2015 through March 18th, 2015. Checks number 1611313161390. And wire transfers from 1 through 526 in the amount of $2,161,628.26.
We paid into vouchers as presented.
Second. Second.
Motion, second, all in favor. Raise your hand. I've been asked by Judge Jackson, he's on the way to school, who can get his item number 18. I must get down to 18 all the way. This was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago. Some of you out there know I hesitated when I loaded, but I hope they know. Two weeks' time, I'm doing some more research. And Gary will come up and tell them what we discussed and what we now know.
Well, I think there was some things in the last game or something that either we didn't express ourselves well enough or the perception was with some wrongs not to right were was different than what was intended. And so I went back to the office and then I went over two or three things and found out some things were a little bit different than what we had first thought, especially on the money issue. And the items that kept being brought up about mandates and making the state not having any mandates, it was totally wrong. And so some of the things got to weigh in on me and I thought they needed further explanation. And so that's when I requested you even put it back on me again. To address the money, first off, because that's the bottom line for everybody. And I'm going to address the entire project of the Tech Share Court, Tech Share Prosecutor, and the hardware, because that was the price that we had, the bottom line, 1.5 million on that. And Randall, you know, put in the $350,000 from this. You can take the bottom line of 1.524, $696,054. The county at this time has 1.1 million in the fund for that, for these projects. Randall offered to put in and said he was putting in $350,000. And then Gary and I talked and we said that our IT fund had 90,000 that he helped to. Put all those dollars together, that's $15,303, too much money. So that means that really all that has to come out of our IT fund is 74,696 dollars. In other words, we weren't needing any extra money to come from the capital projects. The contingency fund is sending out that. We have enough money to cover this with some extra. And that extra that I looked at is going towards the tower that we're having to build in our office just to give us telephonic computers, that $16,000. So the money has stood at being what we thought was 20,000 or so to the negative, needing some money from that contingency fund, turns out worth $15,000 to be good. I've not needed any money. So, so far, that was, that was one thing I wanted to talk about. The, and then the capital cost of what we're going to have to outlay initially is 179 and 110 is $389,000. And basically, that's totally covered almost by what Randall's putting in plus what I put in. It's totally covered by those two amounts of money. Without the county, you don't have to pay anything originally. And then the second thing was the mandates. You know, we don't have a state mandate that says we have to accept e-filing. We don't have a state mandate that says we have a Michael Moore mandate, because we're not a prosecuting office. But we have mandates from OCA that all of our reports must be filed in electronic format. And that's a monthly report. We have report, we have a mandate from DPS that we must report every 10 days on criminal convictions within 10 days. And so we're reporting two, three, four times a month in electronic format to DPS. So there are mandates there that we have to do. They just didn't come from the legislature. They came from other state agencies that we have to buy.
How did you used to do those, those stuff?
Well, the OCA report was done by hand. You know, we'd sit down in the office and write it in, and send it in. OCA changed that, what, two years ago? Two years ago that changed. And Roland has been very culminating, but it's still not a total, we still have to big stone of the report by hand initially to get it into the computer. It doesn't all generate from the computer. With the new software, it will all generate from the computer. So that will be a huge.
Judge, I have a question there.
Sure.
The reports that are required every 10 days and then in electronic format, just to make sure I'm understanding.
Yes.
You are doing that today?
Yes.
That is in compliance today?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That DPS, they came out with this about a year, year and a half ago. The DPS wanted all, anytime anybody convicted of a criminal offense in our office, area detective offices, those must be reported to DPS within 10 days after the conviction. And so it took us a while because that happens on a daily basis. So it took us a while to figure out our time schedules. We don't have, our clerks didn't have the time to sit down and do that daily with everything else. So we had to set aside like, set aside a day or week to do that all so that we can plan for it. The produce thing, it's not a mandate, but, you know, we do use the private collection. And that's all computerized and part of, and yeah, and that's part of the OCA report is our inquest. Those inquests are not on electronic format. They're all handwritten. They're all in documents, still in the document books. And that's a permanent record. That's one of the few records.
You literally write them down?
Yes. Well, we.
I think you actually, I, that's, okay.
When the file is made, our clerks enter it into a document book, physically enter it.
Yeah, that's handwritten.
Not in the computer at all. So that will change with this decision. Everything will go, because that's one of the things that is hand entered into the OCA report that we have. We sit down every month, my clerk and I, and we, she has to get from me how many magistrations we did for the month, how many people got a court-appointed attorney for the month, how many juveniles that we did for the month, either through magistrations or through taking statements or hearings with the news center for holding them longer until it comes up to the mandatory hearing. So all that is a, how many bond restrictions, bond conditions we had during the magistrations, emergency orders, interlocks on powers, this and that and what. All that is hand kept in our inquests. So every month, we sit down with our clerk, how many needs you need, how many needs you need. Whereas with this new software, all of our magistrations will be done electronic. We won't even have, I won't even have to keep these records anymore. Maybe for the juvenile, and I'll keep them until I come back to the office and interrogate. So all of that will go to a totally electronic format. What's good about that is the inquest is a permanent record in our office. It's one of the few permanent records we have. And right now, it's a totally handwritten deal. So it going to electronic is a huge plus. The, the other thing that we have that came out of the last legislature was the issue with the juveniles. And every criminal case, except for traffic that involves juveniles, has to be separate due. And this time, Babbage does not keep those cases as a separate due. It also has the, we cannot release publicly any information about any criminal offense with a juvenile that's not a traffic offense. And so it's just trying to figure out how to rework 30-year-old program to accommodate some of that. It's more work than it's worth when there's a system that we are working at that will take care of the four of them and we don't have to do anything other than programmers set it up for us. So that's, that's why I wanted to come back to the court. The other, and then the last thing that I'll shut up is Dallas and Fort Worth, Dallas County Attorney Court, have both signed on to go to the technology force, Tech Share force, which is what we're trying to do. Both of those agencies have seven or eight detective offices each. If we get, if we get into implementation behind them, it'll be years. I don't want to say a lot of years, but at least two years before we'll even, or they'll even talk to us about implementation. We don't get in there first, then we're just going to go to the backseat and sit and wait. And it's something that, yeah, we could do. I mean, we could do that, but if you talk to Jason and if you talk to Roland about what they have to do daily to keep Babbage running, about the number of times that my girls have kind of worked, signed on, and Babbage won't come up for two or three hours, it's just, it's becoming more and more predictable. It's becoming more and more reliable. And, you know, we haven't guaranteed that tomorrow we'll become working, this one ain't gonna work anymore forever. And I know that's a worst-case scenario, but it is possible. Roland has said he'll stay on board until all this is done, but if we drag this out for years, he's not going to do that. And of all the departments that we have that are either getting on that program or trying to get on that program, including the district clerk, county clerk, district judges, county judges, prosecutor and us, ours is the most critical that we have Roland faithful to us at data conversion and implementation, because we're four offices. Everybody else is one office. So the reason I say that is, like I said last time, there are forms in that computer system that all four ports use, but that all four ports have changed different from the other three ports.
And you're going to convert all of that?
We're converting all that. And Roland is the only one that knows those new offices. And, and so he is, he is being here, he is still being here in that conversion process to work with the programmers and the company that we're buying from to make those conversions as true and pure as possible is critical. And, and then the last one, like we said, IT does have the ability to make, because we decided as a committee several months, if not a year ago, there was not a, there was not a software available that would work for every department as counted from the same vendor. And my truth with that is that, I mean, y'all didn't like this, or we didn't like this, or prosecutors didn't like this, some liked this, some, you know. So just to have the ability with IT to integrate whatever is done, so that there's not a lot, not any double injury, as far as I can tell, even though this program and this program are two different manufacturers, they can still work together. And that's critical and it's huge.
I, I thank you representative for persuasive argument and I appreciate all the guide on that, doing your research and homework and bringing that back to us. It was a little confusing for me last time, and I'll speak to that to the point that it was somewhat so that I had a meeting that I asked definitely with Jason in regards to our IT department, being able to facilitate all those things you just addressed. Your package that you requested is very similar to a prosecutor package, correct?
No, it's nothing like the prosecutor.
In terms of dollar.
In terms of dollars, yes, yes, yes.
Okay. And, and one of the questions I posed to, to Jason is whether or not IT could mirror something very similar to what Randall is, is presenting to be afforded to our JP, to your JP. Jason, do you want to?
Yes, sir.
Speak to that and as far as the coding and things of that nature and, and don't let me speak out of turn, but I thought when I got out of that meeting is that we have the ability to facilitate a lot of those things that the JP's were questioning.
Yes, sir. We do have the ability and the talent in us to write a JP package. Now, having said that, it's something that we've learned with clerks as we're, as we're now changing course and not writing one apparently in-house. Writing a software package like this is a collaborative process. And if the people who are going to be using it are not on board with that, it's not, it's not a question of my team having the talent to do it or the ability or the time or whatever else.
I mean, technically, you should be telling, you say, if collaboratively, if everyone is not on board with it, so if the clerks, if there's something that we're not going in the right direction that will meet their needs, then they're not, certainly not going to be, be a part of this process. Is that one, Gary?
Right, whether the clerks or the JP, anyone that would be writing software for it, if that's not the direction that, that the customer wants to go, then it's not going to work.
Do we know that for sure? I mean, have, have we, has there been a presentation to all of the departments that will be utilizing type of software, regardless of whether it's a state D package or the clerk's package, the district courts? Have we had an opportunity to sit down and, and outlay this presentation that if you feel confident that you could facilitate that, whether or not they would be actually on board or not, or has it just been individualized that we have not had collectively an opportunity to see if those things would be doable?
We have with the clerks, yes.
Have you with the JP's?
No, we have not.
Wait, you talked about.
Well, the short answer is if we're going to buy something from the JP's, this is the package to buy. We can integrate this, we're going to get what's called the source code, we've all talked about this, we're going to be able to integrate this with other departments so that you have information at one time and you have it. And like, in short, if it were one class, this is the package to buy.
Well, I'd like to respond a little bit to this question because we have had presentations on all of these programs. The Oklahoma Advisory Board has met several times. And the in-house thing was brought up at those meetings. It was not the direction that that was decided to bring to this court. What has been brought to this court is what was decided by LDA, but if I'm honest, Wade, would you address that? But I believe that, that that has been addressed for the in-house, and that was not what was decided for the JP or the other courts.
We, we actually did make, we did make a presentation to LDA and the State Advisory Board did take a vote, and the vote was to look elsewhere to outsource this project.
And if I can add a couple of comments to that vote and those parameters around that vote, just to give everybody a little kind of visual parameters of that. There's roughly 40 to 50 individuals that sit on LDA. And often during those discussions, we don't traditionally have dollar amounts. So part of those discussions are, should we go in-house, should we go external, but not really having the dollar amount in terms of the full capacity. Couple of comments that I would like to make here is, we're looking at three-quarters of a million dollars, and we are comparing ourselves to Tarrant County that has $500 million budget. We have an IT director that is saying, we have the intellectual capital to do this in-house. We have individuals that we are paying a salary to do something of like, something to this capacity, but I absolutely hear what you're saying, Jakes, and the other side of that coin is, we don't have individuals willing to collaborate. It won't be successful, which is not what anybody wants. I think when we talked about the investment, as it relates to the budget, the 1.1 million that's currently slated in your presentation to that, that does not take into account the district clerk and the county clerk, which we know is the most immediate need and an agenda item even later today. So I just want to make sure the court is fully aware of this agenda item and not negating, Judge, that there's a need and there's a need in the office, and I'm absolutely hearing that. But we do have staff in-house. The most urgent need has not been addressed and we would have been, we would be using the entire budget. And we are comparing ourselves to counties that have $500 million in their budget.
Well, we're not comparing ourselves to that because in this, we are priced based upon our population. We don't have a million, a million people population that Dallas has. So yes, they are paying way more than what we're paying, but we're paying based on our population in 2010 of a census of 121,000 people or something like that. So I think we're paying a fair share. I don't think we're overpaying based on the fact that we're, this is compared with Dallas and Fort Worth, because they're the ones that are on the project, they're the ones that started the project altogether. So yes, LDA voted, they voted unanimously to come and bring this project to the court.
All 50-odd members of you.
I don't know 50 people that can agree where to go to lunch, so.
Just to hopefully try to bring at least my recollection of events. We typically have about 25 people that show up at LDA. History, when this court created LDA, it didn't provide a, well, it didn't limit membership. It basically said, who's ever interested can go participate. Most of the large offices in the county are typically represented in our LDA meetings. We typically have about 25 people there, which usually involves more than one representative from several of the offices. For instance, like our office, me and Eric typically go to the county attorney's office, the district clerk's office, bring two or three people. When this subject, what to do to replace Babbage, of course, has been the issue that is largest with LDA for a long time. And many of the things y'all are discussing now have been discussed at that body for at least a couple of years. And yes, last November, the board brought a recommendation, and that recommendation was to hire a programmer for the district clerk, for the JP's and the prosecutor to be able to begin, for the, actually for the person in the agency to begin negotiations to purchase those two items. And that's where it's been. I, I would say one of the things that was, has been discussed at that body back at the beginning of this process about in-house was, yes, that we want to do it in-house. There were some rough numbers, some back-end in local numbers that were put together. We had a couple of different sessions about that. But as, as good of a tool as Babbage has been to the county over years, I think one of the important bits that came out of all of our meetings is this, is that when you, when you develop that product in-house, I think really there were two limitations that a lot of users faced. One was the, not the inability, but the slow response time when we have one programmer to develop reports for people needing, for instance, like the sheriff's department. They had some special report that they wanted. It takes time for that person, Roland, historically, to understand that and to map out that process and build it. And the second thing would be updates, updating the product, keeping it fresh, most importantly to reflect legislative changes. Also, I think a pretty tall order when we're talking about, but fairly small, I'm not sure what our programming status is at this point in time, but when it was just one person, a pretty daunting task. So as we worked through this, I think one of the thoughts was with going to some outside minister if it was available. And there's pros and cons. What I liked about in-house is that it gives this county more control. By going outside, having those, having those updates in the software so that it's both technologically and legally updated or available and reports that were necessary to be made available on a more rapid basis. So there are trade-offs going both ways. And, and again, my understanding is that kind of with the Tech Share product, with this inter-local agreement, so that it's really kind of a centricity thing where we're capturing, sharing common effort with other counties around the state, it pluses up our IT department. It still has a focus on prosecution and courts in the state of Texas, but it's, but it's, we don't have the limitations that we face with just an IT department. I mean, I think Tarrant County, I think, has 100 people in their IT department or perhaps more the last time I, so it is, it's a much smaller department. So in any rate, that's, that's what I tell you about the history and kind of the genesis that we got there with that and what your question brought back to that.
Judge, I just have one question for you, if I may. Would you be willing to work with Jason in the interim to identify if it is even feasible that we build something in-house, just so that we truly have had an opportunity for, for you two and all the JP's?
We've had talks about doing it in-house.
And I guess I'm, I'm looking for something a little more structured in terms of a potential timeline of what this might take, any capital outlay this might take, so that we are, have an opportunity to compare that to the Tech Share package at three-quarters of a million dollars.
Well, you know, we're the, we're the biggest office using this, and so we shouldn't be, I mean, Randall's is costing more than ours. And his is not half the office of a program that ours is. He didn't cover four offices. Our program covers four offices with more than one program. His is just a prosecutor. Theirs is just a clerks. District judges is just a judges. Our package is a case management, a judges, and a clerks. It's three packages in one. And it covers four offices, four separate offices. So it covers not necessarily more users, but it covers more area. It has more things in it. So it is going to be a little more expensive, but it's not, it's not as expensive as a prosecutor package. And the, and the reason being is because we got that discount. And the, and the reason being is because we got that discount upfront in the capitalization cost from C and C, because originally our capitalization was around four hundred, something like that, and they reduced it to two-hundred-and-ten, in that project.
And I think just the root of my question was if you two would be willing to go back and reevaluate a true in-house package, and I'm hearing you that you maybe had those conversations a little more loose or informal, but really going back to the table to identify if this is possible with our in-house capital.
I'm sure it's possible.
The dollars associated and timeline, so that we truly are able to evaluate what that impact is.
Judge, your timeline, your timeline is concerned with getting in behind the county package. That's specifically your timeline.
Plus, losing room on top of it.
And one, and one thing to throw in there is that we're, things are still up in the air with the clerks in that, and it may be three or four months before we know for sure if we're going to need to commit all of our resources for the next twelve, eighteen months with the clerks, which is already, that's already kind of set in stone, that's the direction we're going to take. So it would be three or four months before I could even give the judges a timeline, and that timeline could be that we might not be able to lay a finger on it for a year and a half before we even start. So then we're looking at three years.
So your confidence, your comfortability in facilitating that, given the collaborative miss of all of the parties involved, is not that, that high right now?
Hey, one thing, I understand, this is the largest check drive, I get that. By the time that this is implemented, the software the county's using will be thirty years old, and during that thirty-year period, not a dime has been spent on the software, not a dime in thirty years. So that's something to remember when we're, we're talking about, you know, it's a big check drive, all that sort of thing, and there's ongoing maintenance costs, we've spent zero in thirty years, besides basically one person's salary.
Yeah, Judge, wanted to get something to say.
On Eldapp, you, Wade, what he talked about, when we had a vote, even though there are departments that had two, three, four individuals from their department, or some departments had one individual, when we had a vote, we limited it to one vote per department, so that one department, you can come in on that day and bring twelve members to skew the vote. So I just wanted to make sure, because I mean, we didn't hold anything back, we just did it to make the entire playing field equal.
I would like to say, I've been with Babbage for twenty-five years, and it's a great program, it is. And having been the clerk for sixteen years, we didn't even get a receipt reversal program for eighteen years. It's something that's only been done in the last seven years, where if we made a mistake airing money, we had to reverse it ourselves, and I promise you, it was difficult. Sometimes we had thirty receipts, and we would have to go to the ID department, and they were right, felt it was fantastic, and you had to make a branch, you know, where everything matched and find out where you messed it up, because you ended up reversing and reversing. It took us eighteen years to get a reversal. We have needs, we're not mandatory right now to be paperless, it's coming, it is our future, this would be a band-aid. They're great, they work with us. I can't even tell you how long it took us to get driver's license suspensions in the program, because we write our programs. I'm going to say it took ten years. We had to type them, you were going to suspend your driver's license, we had to type them. It took that long to get the program written for us to be able to do it. They're great, but I think it's a band-aid. I think we could spend that money now and still have to spend this money in four years.
I got one other question, but I'm going to pass it off to Commissioner Luth, I know he was trying to get in and.
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
I think.
I think.
My biggest concern is that one of these days, we're not going to have anybody in control of Babbage. Yeah, I don't know how soon, how long that's going to be, but what did you say, that he decided to retire tomorrow? What are we going to do? And this, this particular program is going to have to happen eventually, and I think that the sooner the better, and let's, and I'm with, with the other commissioner here, that we need to get something done, and I think this is the time to do it. It is the right time, as far as I'm concerned.
Before we, before we move on with the vote, I just wanted to make that last concern that I had, and it was basically based on in-house and feeling confident that we could split those needs in-house without going outside during exact coding with Randall already has and moving forward from that. But what I'm hearing now is, is that your confidence level is not that high that we could proceed with that in a, in a simple timeline.
Correct, yes, well stated. And the thing is, I, I don't want this to tank the idea that, or I guess to, to give the impression that, that my team is not able to take care of the county, or, because there, there's, there are still, there's so many other software writing projects to be done. While we've been kind of in limbo with the clerks, the elections folks went out and hired somebody to build, you know, website and presence and all that, that we could have done ourselves. There's still a Belbon tracking software that's county-wide, that's not going to be addressed by any of these packages that we have to do in-house. There's still, we have a long list of, of projects to be done that we'll get done. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, there's some concerns also as far as the resources that we have here moving forward. So your concern is basically, you just don't have the resources available to, to split all of those.
No, no, we do now. We added another program position on this past budget.
Okay, so we do now, so the biggest issue is collaboratively?
Yes. Yes, and I think that's very well stated, to be clear, that the issue is timeline that we're speaking to, potential effective timeline, and being able to work collaboratively.
Right on.
So it will cost the taxpayers three quarters of a million dollars.
I mean, that's what's been stated, that's what the question was posed, so.
That's what I'd answered, but I would, I would, I would question, because you said with your current staff that you've been, if you're going to stay with writing the first package, you maybe couldn't get to this package for another year and a half.
Correct.
And so, without adding.
Exactly.
Time is another deal, staff is a.
I was just going to say, without adding on, which is a potential option in the interim to build, because again, we're talking about three quarters of a million dollars on the taxpayer dollar. So when I hear timeline and I hear lack of ability to, to be collaborative in departments, that's a very real statement, and the impact of that is to the taxpayers, saying that we cannot work collectively in this county, and we have to stand in front of the taxpayers and speak to that. So if this court feels that they can do that, that is really their vote.
Why was this not brought up with the prosecutor package?
I'm sorry?
Why was this not brought up with the prosecutor package?
We did, but there was a vote two weeks ago, and it was a failed vote.
Now, wait, prosecutor package, twenty-third.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were speaking to the JP package. Yes, the JP, yeah, the band-aid specifically drove that, and especially for the district and county clerks. I mean, that's the most immediate need, from my perspective, I can't speak to the court.
Well, you say immediate, if we don't have a program for this package or for Babbage, it's pretty immediate. I move that we go ahead and purchase Tech Share Court JP package for seven hundred seventeen thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars forty cents, and that includes the Court's JP Development Project Addendum and the Court's JP Implementation Agreement as sole source.
One second. We have a motion, everybody, if I raise your hand, please. Let me raise that a little higher.
My concern is that if we're weighing heavily on the collaborative part, then I've got some concern with that.
Look, at the, at the end of the day, the bottom line is that Babbage in its day was great. It's like comparing an eight-track tape to an iPod tape. It was great when it was great, but it's no longer great, it's going to go away, so we have to do, we are in the dark ages. I have been to two schools, and everyone at the school said, you're still on Babbage? And I said, yeah, we are, so we have to do something. It's been on the shelf for about five years, right? Well, it's coming down from the shelf, we're going to do something.
I, I want to make sure that I'm.
We actually.
Don't have any objections to, you're right, going forward, that Babbage deals to sleep, that's how we get there.
Thank you, thank you. And Wade, if I can ask, just for the record, if I can have a copy of the minutes for that Eldapp vote, Wade, I'm not sure if you've, if I can get a copy of the minutes for that Eldapp vote that we referenced in the discussion today, not urgent.
From November.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Okay, that took a little bit more time than we intended, but have a safe trip, Judge. Number three, monthly treasury report to recognize the monthly treasury report. Leanne is sick today, she wanted me to show you that she has not moved any money in the last month, waiting to see how much cash is going to be needed for the current, maybe what I'm, so, do you have any questions? That's a solid. To recognize insurance fund report, Kay, is there anything spectacular you want to talk about?
Nothing unusual.
Nothing unusual, okay, still recognized. Number five, financial report to recognize a comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year of the year deception of early 2014.
Just a couple of things I'd like to point out, looks at, on page sixteen of your report, it's a quick snapshot of our activities for the year, and specifically addressing the general fund today. You'll see that after transfers were made to the special funds, our fund balance grew about $179,000. And then if you'll jump back to page fourteen, I would like for you to see the breakdown of our fund balance and the general fund. You'll see there towards the bottom of the page, we have fourteen million one hundred two thousand three hundred and thirty-one, and assigned fund balance, and that's equal to about one hundred days of our current operating budget, and we do have a policy that says we need to keep it used every day.
Carrie, I do have a question on that, and I'm referencing page sixteen where you shared the amount that rolled in. Can you give that dollar amount again? I'm not seeing it on the.
It's the first figure from the bottom, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
One seventy, which is a significant smaller amount than what we've seen for previous years. We traditionally see, is it close to a million plus roll into fund balance? So I want to make sure the court is very aware, because that affects the financial capacity long-term for this court, we usually see a million dollars plus. We only saw a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. A couple of things, and Carrie, keep me honest here, obviously these kind of expenditures, which we just spoke to is driving that, but the second is, we're finding departments spending much closer to their actual budget amount, which may be warranted, but we have traditionally had a lot more kind of roll into the fund balance or the savings. And so Carrie, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, but that was critical, I thought.
But I think that we have probably a million more percentage-wise on our budget last year than we typically do, and that is why the bottom line is so much smaller.
An anecdotal, anecdotal observation is that a couple of years ago, we kind of changed the way we budgeted, and we based the budget on what people had spent the year before. And what that does is it drives every department, so if they're not going to give me the money, I'm going to go ahead and spend it all. So I think we need to base it on need, and what we feel is their need, rather than what they spent last year. That's my anecdotal.
Something to keep in mind during the budget process.
Yeah, and we looked at a comparison of four-year trends of what they had spent in the last four years, and that was not a strategy we used last year, but a couple of years ago, so you're exactly right, Commissioner Church. I would like to think our departments are not just spending, to your point, hell, if they're not going to give it to me, I'll just spend it, I would like to think we're not doing that on the taxpayer dollar, but if you'll remember during budget, we made a lot of purchases out of that current fiscal year, and I think the whole court thought, what are we missing? There must be something wrong with the spreadsheet, because we made lots of purchases out of that fiscal year, and then still prepped for the current one, so those purchases are obviously driving back to the one million that we expect to see. Not alarming, but it caught my attention, so I did want to share that with the court as well.
Many years ago, we didn't have the funding balance, and that's how that was built up, money spent, but now that we have that.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Okay, number six, tax office to consider an act upon transfer of the part-time position currently in the jury budget to the district clerk's budget to assist with the work of the creative agent. Ms. Carolyn.
She's been asked this week.
Would you like to speak today, or who wants to?
You want to do it. I actually requested it.
Okay.
Because we are changing departments, no new position or anything, it's just a swap from jury to district clerk, and it better fit swap position.
So is the position open today?
No, it is filled.
Okay, so it's just moving that over on the books, not creating a new position to her, okay.
We just wanted it in my classification.
You have a motion?
I move we approve the transferring part-time position currently in the jury budget to the district clerk's budget to assist with the work of the creative agent.
Ms. Carolyn.
She's been asked this week.
Would you like to speak today, or who wants to?
You want to do it. I actually requested it.
Okay.
Because we are changing departments, no new position or anything, it's just a swap from jury to district clerk, and it better fit swap position.
So is the position open today?
No, it is filled.
Okay, so it's just moving that over on the books, not creating a new position to her, okay.
We just wanted it in my classification.
You have a motion?
I move we approve the transferring part-time position currently in the jury budget to the district clerk's budget.
Okay. Have a motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Number eight, Texas Association of Counties to hear a report from Texas Association of Counties regarding Affordable Care Act, ACA, to include the new IRS reporting requirements and ACA reporting and tracking service, ARS, offered by Tac.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning again. I have Quinn Wilder here from Texas Association of Counties, she is our employee benefits consultant with Tac, she's here to talk about the infamous Affordable Care Act and give us a report on that, to include the new IRS reporting requirements and the ACA reporting and tracking service, ARS, that Texas Association of Counties is offering. With that, I'll turn it over to Kim.
Thanks, Kay, I appreciate it. Commissioner, it's a pleasure being here with you this morning. I am going to give you a little bit of background this morning on the Affordable Care Act, in case any of you have missed our regional pool workshops or any of the educational workshops we've given over the last about year and a half, we've pretty, been pretty active in the, the conferences we've given and things like that, so, so I'm just going to do a quick update. You should have on your screen a, a timeline, I only go back to 2014 here, up to 2018, so I want to give you again a little bit of background as to why we have to establish measurement stability periods, and why you have to vote and report to the Internal Revenue Service. So essentially, you know, the Affordable Care Act's been in place since March of 2010, in 2014, the individual mandate came about, so what that did was it made, it, it made all of us accountable to have affordable and minimum value health coverage. So you, you all already offer health coverage to your employees, but the reason this is significant is because the Internal Revenue Service is going to make sure. significant is because the Internal Revenue Service is going to make sure that you do that via a reporting system, which, again, we'll get into in just a moment. So that's real important, that everyone understands their responsibility to carry individual health coverage. The comprehensive out-of-pocket maximums were changed, the 90-day waiting period was also changed. You cannot have a waiting period longer than that. Yours, of course, does not exceed that. The PECORI fees and the transitional reinsurance fees are also required to be paid in 2014, and then again in 2015, and I'll get into that in just a moment. Employer mandates, in 2015, if you have more than 100 employees, you have to provide health coverage to those employees. You cannot essentially opt out of your responsibilities. So many employers have just said, well, I'm just going to terminate my coverage. That's no longer possible without a hefty fine from the Internal Revenue Service. States may open exchanges to employers going forward in 2017, and then in 2018, we'll look down the road a little bit, and we'll talk about the excise tax in our subsequent meetings and conferences and things like that. We want you to be aware of that. We want you to know what TAC is doing to mitigate some of the, some of the ways we might get to that excise tax, or try to avoid that excise tax going forward in the future, because that might be a big one. Okay, the transitional reinsurance fees, the patient-centered outcome fees, were all paid for by the Texas Association of Counties, because you are administrative services group under and with our pool. So it gives you an idea of how much that costs, but essentially, we did not, we were able to pay that out of reserves. We did not have to increase premiums to any of our pool groups. We did not have to, you know, make adjustments in any of premium dollars to do that. So we're very, very happy about that. Again, we'll just look forward to that excise tax, knowing it's out there. You all are not close to it, and you're doing a very good job here in Powder Cappy with your claims and things like that. So, but we'll just, we just want to be aware that that's still out there, and may be something to look at, and just be aware of going forward. Okay, here's the individual mandate. Again, a lot of folks have said, especially folks who are younger, I'm just not going to buy health insurance, I don't, you know, I don't need it, I don't go to the doctor, in which case they will pay a penalty, the greater of $95 this year, or 1% of your household income, and again, it'll outline there what those penalties will look like going forward. Parents' employers now can keep their children on up until age 26, so that was another mandate, which is, I think, good, seems like kids are staying home a little longer and school a little bit longer. Individuals can gain coverage, it does not make any difference where they get it, from their employer's plan, from their status employer's plan, but again, it is by law required this year.
I have a question along with the slides. As it relates to the individual mandate, since Texas did not participate in Medicaid expansion, how does that, from an IRS perspective, I think if they get a, the word that's coming to mind is a claim that they would have been eligible under their federal poverty guidelines, and they are exempt, does that still play?
Yes, the donut hole sort of that it's been referred to, where folks can kind of fall into that gap, that they make too much to be qualified for subsidies, or too little to qualify for Medicaid, is a real thing here in Texas, because again, we did not expand that, and that was one thing the Affordable Care Act didn't anticipate, I think, from what I've read, but again, the states weren't mandated to do that. So there's been individual circumstances that, you know, people are so resourceful. I've read of one woman who, you know, had four kids, and she didn't qualify for Medicaid, but made too little, too much, excuse me, for the federal subsidies. So she just went out and quit her job, and then suddenly she wasn't able to get those subsidies and things like that. So that is still a problem, if you, if you, you know, want to call it that, just depends on what.
She's got to go off making lists.
Yes, right.
Well, and I just think, depending on the survey that's been quoted, Texas is often quoted as the most uninsured population in the whole country.
That is true.
So without us participating in the Medicaid expansion, I was interested in how this kind of ruled out from an individual perspective. I have heard the first time individuals actually paying this penalty with the income tax season, but also there being a waiver, if you will, that if you would have been eligible, should Texas have participated, that that's an option, but there are lots of red tape to do that. So I just, I didn't know what the ramifications were, if you're hearing any of that attack.
So, yes, it's still a very real problem, you know, and, yes, all valid points that you bring up. Texas is very, is one of the states that's very, has a very low insurance, you know, I guess, percentage, you know, so.
Is that my choice? We don't do that, and.
We don't. That's another very valid point. We don't, we don't know how many, again, will choose to just not pay. You know, I have, you know, personal experience with folks who are younger, I'm just going to pay the penalty. I'm not, it's not worth it to go out and obtain a $400 or $500 insurance policy when I go to the doctor once a year, and I'm here.
I feel that that, that.
So there are a few of both sides. So the large employer mandate, again, determines if you do afford 100 employees, in 2015, you will have to offer insurance. Again, you cannot avoid that without paying a hefty penalty. The coverage has to be affordable, and it has to provide minimum value, both of what yours does, because you pay the premium on, or most of the premium on all tiers of coverage for your employees, and all of tax plans meet the minimum value standard by the Affordable Care Act. In 2016, then, the mandate actually goes down from 100 employees to 50 employees. So, so it does.
Actually, I do, if you'll probably just hit the X, or remind me later, so it doesn't try to install it, is what I was going to say. Just to stay honest with your presentation.
So, and then that affordability mandate remains the same for this year and next year. Okay, so, again, like I mentioned, the Internal Revenue Service needs to understand and know how you've provided health insurance to your employees and their dependents. So one of the, one of the things you're going to have to do is do that reporting. You also are going to have to make sure that you're offering the correct employee's insurance. And by doing that, you should establish measurement and stability periods as a policy for your county employees. Measurement and stability periods relate to looking back at the hours worked per employee, especially if they are either part-time variable or seasonal, and measuring that employee so that you know when that employee has to be offered coverage.
So there's a trigger line with that?
Yes, sir. Exactly. So the measurement period, because all, all employees have to be tracked, now, it's a given that your full-time employees have health insurance when they, when they come on board, and ongoing full-time health, employees are offered health insurance. Where you get into the reasons behind the measurement and stability safe harbor is when you have a variable or seasonal employee. Again, the mandate is if they work more than 29 hours on average per week during their measurement period, you are mandated by law to offer them health insurance. If you don't offer them health insurance when you're supposed to, the entire plan could be fine. So that's one of the reasons, again, we're here talking to you as, as part of a policy, it's our recommendation that you establish those measurement periods. The measurement period can be anywhere from three months to 12 months. So you would take a variable hour employee, and you could measure them for any length of time, from three months all the way to one year. The pros and cons with having a shorter or longer measurement period might be that if you're measuring them for only three-month periods of time, it might be a little bit more of an administrative challenge to put them on insurance, and take them off of the insurance, and offer them the insurance, and so on and so forth. If you measure them for a longer period of time, like one year, you have more weeks to average in, and then you have to offer them coverage for as long as you measured them for. So if you, so if you do offer them a measurement period of 12 months, you have to offer them health coverage for 12 months. I think administratively, it's a little bit easier to do that, however, they're going to remain on the insurance policy for 12 months. So the measurement period, three to 12 months, the standard administrative period is your waiting period. Your waiting period is 60 days before an employee becomes eligible, and then the stability period there is the timeframe that they have to remain on the insurance. Again, it has to be as long as the standard measurement period, no less than six months. So if you did a three-month measurement period, you, the minimum they can be offered insurance or on the plan would be six months. Does that make sense? The minimum of six, maximum of the standard measurement period.
Okay, what is your recommendation of the standard measurement period that we should use?
Because of the type of variable and seasonal employees that we have, I've done a little research over the last several years. In my opinion, a 12-month measurement period is the most efficient period for us to use. For example, our road and bridge seasonal employees, if we use less than a 12-month measuring period, much of the time, at least some of those employees, would hit that threshold. With a 12-month measurement period, I don't think that we would ever have a situation, or would at least likely not have situations, where those seasonal employees would hit that measurement threshold. Consequently, we would be below the threshold, would not have to offer insurance for the stabilization period. So in my opinion, a 12-month measurement period is most efficient for us. Also, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, most counties across the state are adopting a 12-month measuring period for those segments.
Grandfathered and non-grandfathered plans. So your plan was in place in the grandfathered plan on 3/25 of 2010, and has not been significantly modified. So moving forward, and when you, when you go on and look at plans in the future, you'll want to consider this heavily. The grandfathered plans are not subject to many of the Affordable Care Act provisions as to mandated care, and again, you'll want to carefully consider that. There are quite a few provisions in non-grandfathered plans that, again, are mandated by, by the law there. So just wanted to give you that slide and that perspective going forward. Here are the reporting requirements. So the, again, the measurement period, individual mandate, because you're a large employer, an applicable large employer, you have to have a measurement period and offer those part-time folks or variable hour folks coverage at the correct time. The Internal Revenue Service, again, is going to make sure you've done this and done it correctly by these, having you file these forms. It's code, IRS section code 6055 and 6056. The B forms and the C forms. The B forms are filed by the plan sponsor and provided to all insured employees and the Internal Revenue Service. And then the C forms are filed by the employer, and again, it's sort of like a W2 for health coverage is what I'm calling it. It's provided to all employees who were full-time or full-time equivalent during any month in 2015, and then the transmittal goes to the Internal Revenue Service. So those are the section codes that mandate that you do the reporting. Why is the reporting required? Again, because of the individual mandate. The IRS does not know you've covered all your folks until you actually report that you've covered all your folks. All right, so move ahead, because you all understand, as long as you're an applicable large employer, you will have to do the reporting. I want to kind of move forward here, because I want to now draw your attention to, to the handouts that are in your packet. So what the Texas Association of Counties, and this is the one I'm referring to, is the TAC, HOPP, ACA Reporting and Tracking Service. We've acronymed the ART program by Texas State Law. We have a lot of acronyms at TAC, and the new ACA reporting requirements, again, on that first page, are under section 6055 and 6056. Again, you're going to have to do, do and file those forms to the employees by January and February of next year. TAC has decided to contract through Equifax, our board approved that two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, to contract through Equifax to use as a, as a provider for this service. All employees, employers who have 50 or less employees, TAC is going to have to do the reporting and the filing for counties with less than 50 employees. So we were looking for a vendor on our own, and came upon a few, and chose to go with Equifax as one. Essentially, we are going to, to, to offer the service to all 254 Texas counties, all of the counties that are in our pool, or, you know, we call them members, although because we're an association, I feel like they're all members, but essentially, I've given you the 2015 participation fees there. So what we wanted to do is, is provide this service free of charge, especially this first year. A lot of this took a lot of folks by surprise, and a lot of it is a lot more expensive than we, than anyone really anticipated. So, so at least for this first year, we're waiving all of the fees, unless you want us to distribute the forms for the 6055 and 6056 reporting. Unless you wait too long, there might be some, some penalties, and if we did that on purpose, because we didn't want folks to come in in November, December, and say, okay, here's all the data, and I need forms filed by January. all the data and I, and I need forms filed by January. So we really, we wanted, we wanted to make it, make it a priority. We wanted to, to make a decision on it so that we could begin obtaining data as soon as possible. Because as Kay knows, once you start measuring, if in fact you do choose this, the 12-month measurement period as Kay's recommended, we've got to go back to August of 2014 to track. So we're already seven months or so into the measurement period. The arts program is going to track every variable and seasonal employee and complete your forms and distribute them if you'd like this to as well. So those are some big requirements, that the longer we wait, the more we'll have to play catch-up on that.
Okay, what's your recommendation?
That being said, I just want to inform the court that we have manually been tracking since August all variable seasonal employees here at the county. So we're in good shape as far as the tracking goes. The arts program or, is, is a very good program. I think it would be very beneficial for us. We're going to have to manage and download that information and that data regardless whether TAC prepares those downloadable forms for us or whether we do it ourselves. If we can get the, the print-ready forms provided at no cost to the county, it's a no-brainer to take advantage of that program. As far as the forms distribution, the deadlines for the distribution of these forms are the same as the deadlines for the distribution of the W2s each year. Consequently, I do not feel like we would need to utilize the arts program and TAC for that distribution. If we have the downloadable forms, we can merge them with our W2 forms and put them in the same envelope. It's my understanding that the IRS has approved that they be submitted in the same envelope with the W2s. So we can merge them together and send them out in one envelope and save that $0.95 per form fee. So that being said, if we decide to go with the arts program, it would be virtually at no cost to the county this year unless we come into the plan late. You'll notice on the handouts that the interlocal agreement is indicated there that it needs to be signed by 3/31 and data submission, the first submission by April 30th. We did get notification on Friday afternoon that those deadlines have been extended. The interlocal will need to be signed by the 30th of April and the first data submission made by, May 30th. So there's a little difference.
So no, no charge to the county for this year. For the, for the year forward, do we know of a figure that we, or even what we can look again?
Equifax has currently given us a 5% trend, you know, on that, across the board. So whether or not, or how we manage that is unclear, but it'll plus 5% more next year to TAC right now.
Then, Kim, as it relates to the participation, is this a yearly participation agreement?
Yes, it is. So you would just be agreeing for, as, right now, for one year.
Exactly. So as we prepare for budget season, if there is an expected increase, we'll leave that lower amounts, or at least an estimate.
Right, and that would be addressed at that time. Also, that being said, we, that we plan to go out for bid this year. So there has been discussion about what happens if, what if we move? And so I've communicated with TAC and determined that should we move September 30th, that we would be able to go forward for the balance of the year as a non-member if we elect to do that. If we choose to do that, there would be, you'll see on your list of participation fees, there's a cancellation fee of $4,000. We would be responsible for that $4,000 if we were to move and decide to, to stay on board as a non-member. Also, the annual subscription fee of $4.05 per form would also be applicable in that situation. They have told me, however, that the activation fee would be waived in that scenario. So we're looking at about $7,000 to the plan if we chose, if we choose to move and we choose to continue as a, a non-member. Now, we would have full access to our data if we decide to move and we choose not to move forward as a non-member, we could pay the $4,000 cancellation fee and let that be it. We would have access to our data at that time and then we could either through whatever our new vendor might be or through our own in-house tracking, finish out the year's tracking for the IRS recording for this year. So there are some options there. But if we stayed with TAC, there would be no cost for the duration of the year. Now, next year, let's say we did, we did go out for bid, we changed vendors, we continue as a non-member, we, we paid the $7,000 in fee, then the following year, we would have the opportunity to continue with TAC even though we're a non-member, but the cost would go up because we would also be responsible for that one-time activation fee that's listed here at the $7.50 per employee. So that would bring our fees to somewhere around $10,894 for that subsequent year in that scenario if we go with another vendor and we continue as a non-member forward. But for this year, there would be no cost to get into the program and to have TAC begin the tracking for us and the participation or preparation of the forms.
I make a motion that we approve participation in the ACA reporting and tracking service offered by TAC, AGHBP.
Motion second on my favor, raise your hand.
I don't have a copy of the interlocal agreement in my packet, is that provided?
Yeah, it, it's not ready yet.
We only have it in draft form. I'm happy to give you the draft knowing that it's not quite out of legal yet, which is why we extended the deadline.
Okay, so you want to do that next time then?
Or wait till soon?
We could authorize you to sign and then whenever it's available, we can. Or we can.
Now, why don't we, why don't we look at it first?
Okay.
And then Kay, your recommendation on nine, the ACA measurement is 12 months. The stability period, does that follow automatically or is there a measurement to that?
Yes, it matches and it mirrors the measurement period.
I make a motion that we approve the establishment and formal adoption of ACA measurement and stability period of 12 months as directed by our HR director. Motion second on my favor. I have everybody just by the way right here. And can we get a copy of that PowerPoint presentation? Of course. Thank you. Okay, number 10, county employee benefits wellness program. Hear a request, institute a wellness program, county employees that had any action necessary. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge, good morning Commissioners. I'm Sergeant Huddleston from our County Sheriff's Office, currently assigned to the Training and Personnel of our Commission. Thank you for this opportunity to address this, for this issue, and I will be brief. I am requesting the Commissioners' Court to consider allowing a committee deformed to propose introducing a workable, solution-oriented, wellness incentive program. I propose a committee deformed with at least one employee from each of the different departments with no more than 10 people. This committee would be responsible for coming together to discover what course of action that would be needed to be taken by talking to employees of the respective departments to discover what their needs are and to make recommendations in the interest of the county and the employees of the county. My hope and plan is after six to eight weeks, the committee will be able to report back to the Commissioners' Court with their findings and from there, make a recommendation for a final proposal. Dan Seltzer, the founder and editor and director of Compendium Incorporated, one of the nation's foremost creators of inspiring books and gifts, stated that it's simple, predictable human chain of events. If the company takes good care of its employees, the employees will take good care of its customers and the customers will take good care of the company. I believe within my heart, a comprehensive wellness incentive program will not only reduce insurance costs, use of sick leave, and workers' compensation claims, but will also improve the quality of life for all employees of Potter County.
I agree. How do you propose to do this?
Right, right now, I just want to form a committee from, from different departments, people who want to, who, who want to be involved in this and then from there.
So is the county one?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to ask that we include our HR director. I know TAC has a whole initiative of wellness and what they offer just for free because we are participating members. So Kay, I'm volunteering, if you were a representative, if I may kindly ask, great initiative. And you want 10, at least 10 people?
Yes, ma'am.
Who else?
I, I would really like to have Kay and I'd like, I'd like to have a year.
Is that what I understand? He's reminding you.
Yep.
Okay.
Elizabeth, we're volunteering.
She was already.
Okay, good. I would already sign myself.
Okay, thank you. Valen, Valen wants to be on.
Yeah, approve the committee first.
That's what we're on.
Can I get that beat from the front?
Sure.
You might take the towel here?
I am.
We got the final document on there.
I'd like to volunteer George Sample, he'll be on.
Good choice.
We'll make sure and let him know you volunteered again.
Mike, do you want to have some facility?
Cecil, Cecil.
Sharon, you got it, Mike?
Morning.
Sharon, I was.
Sharon?
Please, I hear.
What about District Works Office, anybody in there?
It would be me.
It would be you. Okay, I have 10 people. That's good. Okay, so this committee will be and we'll come back to the court with a recommendation on how we implement this plan.
Yeah, this, this, part of the city, we, we had this protective program. I had a lot of people that were having a quick spoken and a lot of people lost weight that didn't lose. It was a rather beneficial program. It did save money for the city, so I would encourage, encourage this program.
You're going to be the chair. Put you as the chair. Yes, thank you.
I move that we approve the institution of a wellness program committee to come back to the Commissioners' Court with a proposal. Thank you.
Ten seconds. On my favor, raise your hand. Thanks, Father.
May I just add that as part of our RFP process that we're preparing now, we, there is a questionnaire that goes out with our RFP to all interested parties. And I'm in process now of developing some questions related specifically about wellness initiatives and what they offer, also healthcare reform and, and whatever they bring to the table with regards to healthcare reform, because all of those things are very tangible services that all parties would need to be, get into consideration for what they did or, or failed to bring to the table.
Okay, number 11, Santa Fe Parking Lot AT&amp;T. Consider an agreement with AT&amp;T allowing a certain number of their employers to park in the parking lot northwest of Santa Fe Parking Lot owned by Potter County or Flannery with the number of parking spaces and things we determine. I have had people come to me, several people, asking if they can park their Ford feet. Now, I've talked to Mike and also Dick, and we would have to resurface that and re-stripe it, but I think that would be minimal cost because I think our road bridge people could probably do that for sure. But, but anyway, the point is, these people park there anyway. And so, right now, we don't have an overflowing parking lot in Santa Fe because we are no longer there, so there's no longer a big, big crowd.
So these would be dedicated spaces?
Dedicated spaces and they would pay $15 a month. I know it's not much, but. We have nine.
We have, we need to lay the parking out totally carefully.
How different would you?
There's a lot of wasted space in the parking, the distance between the cars, stuff like that, so the parking lot would better be utilized. Why do you, did you say 90 dedicated? I need to check that just to verify.
Yeah, there's, I think there's right at 90, a little bit, maybe a little bit more.
I think his question was how many total spots are there and that's 90. That's not what they're requesting.
No, no, they're not requesting, no, we never give them the whole spot.
That's what I was asking.
There's 90 spaces that we can dedicate at least 20 to them, let the county have the rest or something.
What kind of, what kind of controls will we have on these 15 spots?
That's the, that's the thousand dollar question. The control we have right now is Johnny, they're taking, putting stickers on their cars and really pissing them off. So I don't know how we, how we regulate that. They had a sticker, they have to, you know, obviously have to have stickers that said Potter County slash AT&amp;T at the parking that spot and if someone else is there, they should get a ticket.
So these parking stickers are going to be something they're going to provide or we're going to provide?
I'm sure they will.
But they won't, nobody will issue a JP, not receive a ticket on our parking lots.
About a tow truck every once in a while.
We've got signs up right now, that's never really enforced in here.
We, we did that once, we, we towed one about 40 years ago. They all moved their cars, looked like cockroaches. It just took a lot of time, but it lasted. I don't know, that's just something I, I wanted to present, let y'all think about it and that Mike can get back to us with that, how much it would cost in road bridge, how much it would cost actually to resurface and re-stripe. He wants a thought, so I promised him I would pass it along, okay?
Do you think in the future that we'll need that lot?
Yes.
Well, my first thought was, and then I thought about it a little longer, was that maybe we don't need that lot, but you know, if our future plans have something that will fill up the Santa Fe.
What are you doing there? The auto theft thing upstairs, the top floor, that's, that'll take up a few, but we'll see. Okay, number 12, Potter County Extension Office to provide an update on open agent positions in Potter County, Brandon Dukes, District Extension Administrator, Texas A&amp;M Agri Life Extension.
Good morning. Good to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with me for a few minutes. Wanted to provide an update, as you know, we've got some vacancies in the Agri Life Extension Office. We've got all those positions announced. Actually have Liz here today and. hopefully we can take action with an FCS position today, and so we're excited about that, I'll tell you more about that in a few moments, but our ag position and our 4H positions are both vacant. And so we've got those announced, internal applicants, my plan is, I've had some interest in the acquisition from a few different counties interning, and so it will stay internal for a little while, and hopefully we can attract applicants within the system already. The 4H position, we may or may not get internal interest on, sometimes those are not as appealing internally to agents for whatever reason, and so my plan is to leave it internal for about a month, a month and a half, and then announce it external and start to attract applicants that way. So hopefully we can move as quickly as possible, sometimes it takes longer than we want to take, we want to get the right person, and so we'll search everything, involve all the processes as much as you would like to be involved. I appreciate all of you being involved in interviewing Liz and talking with her, as well as others that we've considered for this position, so at this time, if it's okay, we can move right into that. I want to make sure to tell you a little about the FCS position, I was interested to hear about the wellness program because I think Liz can bring a lot of good ideas and points to that committee, and so I was excited we could be here today, she could get on that committee, she has tremendous expertise in those areas. And the FCS position is a position that focuses on health and wellness, reaching out to adult and youth audiences to promote health and wellness and nutrition, to promote positive family development, and to promote financial stability, financial management, to those that are interested in those types of classes. Liz will share some responsibility in 4H and youth program in the interim, she'll have quite a bit to do with that until we can get that position filled, once we get that position filled, she will assist them as needed with subject matter expertise. And certainly she has a large role in establishing and maintaining advisory groups, which Liz is very well connected to in the community, and so she makes very good advisory groups and will continue to utilize and lean on their expertise. I think most of you know Liz, she's been employed with Prairie View A&amp;M University and has worked closely with Agri Life Extension Agents for the past couple of years, very high energy, very knowledgeable, related to health and wellness. She has a advisor's degree in human sciences from Texas Tech University, a master's in human sciences from Prairie View A&amp;M University. She started her career with what was then Texas Agriculture Extension Service, now Texas Agri Life Extension Service, in nineteen ninety in Fort Penn County. She also worked for Agri Life in Love County before moving to Amarillo and taking a position with the Phantom Regional Planning Commission. She came back and began to work for Prairie View, the partner of Extension Program Prairie View in two thousand and thirteen, and has been with them to the present day. So we're very excited to attract someone with that kind of experience, that kind of knowledge and skills to a position with Agri Life, I think she will bring a great deal of needed energy and expertise to our office there. So with that, I'll invite Liz up, and if you have any questions for Liz or for myself, we'd be happy to answer those.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity. As Brandon mentioned, I worked as the Prairie View Agent for two years, and most of y'all have been familiar with the work I've done, I've built in relationships in the community, bringing new audience into extension, so I'm excited to be able to be your new FCS Agri Life Agent, and look forward to the opportunities to work together. And again, also excited about this new committee, so we can work together on getting the county back to health.
This is Brandon. Will they fill the eighteen ninety position?
Yes.
Liz that.
Yes.
And you'll be able to transfer out of that into this without having to cross?
Yes.
Keep going back there.
I'll be the April first.
We'll assist Prairie View with that interview process as well, but they'll take the lead on that.
Dave, I have a question for you, will this require formal action of the court to approve her into the FCS position?
Yeah.
I did want to just, just for the record, make sure we're clear, we had a little misunderstanding on salary, and so wanted to make sure we were clear on that. The county portion of our salary, including travel, will be twenty-six thousand and sixteen dollars. Agri Life will pick up the remainder, the total salary is fifty-six thousand, and we do that for now for our April report. Thank you.
And I would like, before Brandon walks off, I would like to publicly thank you, he participated in the Step Up to Success Conference, which was six hundred middle school kids, he was one of our speakers in our breakout session, lots of good comment and feedback on your survey, so I want to say thank you for participating and definitely just kind of jumping in on the flag, because we didn't give you a lot of feedback, so thank you for that.
That was a very enjoyable experience, and anytime we can do anything like that, we're looking to reach young people and recruit them to careers in extension, so that's what we need to get the best in the process.
Right, number thirteen, real estate sale, to hear a report on the status of the sale in twenty-four, four, south of six, seven.
This is the contract that was put on place on the six street property, they have chosen to exercise that ability to get out of that contract for now. They are still interested in the property, but they do not have all their numbers and their contractors lined up, and so rather than keep extending the feasibility period, and they didn't want to upset you as a board, is really what they said, they wanted to go ahead and cancel, and if they're interested in the future, they'll come back. So as of now, there's no contract in the program.
Okay, number fourteen, insurance premiums, to hear a report on insurance premiums for the period of May first, twenty fifteen through April third, of twenty sixteen, insurance rate, right date? From insurance agency, recognized report and approved payment of invoices last year.
Yes, the insurance comes up for renewal on the third of April, and that is all the property has insurance, with the exception, well, the property comes up July, July first, and also the cyber liability comes up July first, so other than that, all leads to the insurance. We're recommending that the general liability, the law enforcement liability, the auto and the public officials liability, we renew the TAC, the crime, we renew the travel and the tank pollution liability, we renew the NOLAS, TAC did as additional coverage, crime coverage that they are putting on their property policy effective May first, however, it's not quite as broad as we have with travelers, and it's a lower limit, it's a hundred thousand dollar limit, and it's employee dishonesty, and we have much broader coverage with travelers, so I made the full presentation to David and to, I ought to put it, last week, and went over the details of that, but the premium, the total premium for the recommended packages was up seven thousand nine hundred and seven dollars, which is about a three point five percent increase, however, we do have six additional vehicles in that quote, twenty-seven with physical damage, twenty-seven additional vehicles with physical damage. That needs to be adjusted some, but that's what these numbers reflect. The autos, there are ten vehicles that are left off, that's seventeen with physical damage that we need to remove, so we'll adjust that issue, we'll be pretty close to this number.
And Steve Lester, we did not have an increase, is that correct?
We did not have an increase on the property, these casualty lines went up about three percent. We do have a little bit of exposure change on the second page, the number of armed active police officers gone up slightly, there are a few additional exposure changes that caused a little bit of an increase, but not significant.
What about the cyber liability? I don't see that included.
Cyber liability comes up with the property.
With the property.
July first, and I'll be making a complete presentation and comparison on that because TAC is now offering cyber liability coverage, and we'll do a side-by-side comparison on what we have and what TAC is offering.
No, I think Steve's covered it, we did talk about the crime and the potential of dropping our crime policy with travelers, but I think after looking at all the covers that theirs offer versus what TAC's, it wouldn't be prudent to do that this time, so that was really the only thing, and then the vehicles were worked on, it worked out, but I'd have to.
And Dave, we need improvement of the invoices, I'm just referencing the agenda item.
Yeah, it's renewing our coverage for an additional year, so I think it does need action to approve the invoices, but there's also an agreement with Willis as a broker that needs to be approved.
Okay, I have a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation as provided by Steve Lap, had to approve the payment of invoices, and also to approve Willis as the broker.
Second?
Second.
Promotion and second, I'll look back originally.
Willis has a full evidence today. One side note on the property situation, the third-party consultant is coming in on the end of this month, trying to state the credit analysis.
And I saw the payment on our end, on our vouchers, I don't know if they billed their fees already, but I saw that.
Now, we should.
We're paying, but we're getting reimbursed.
Yes.
Thanks. Number fifteen, master planning, to consider an act upon approving an agreement with Architexis to continue with project master planning and to develop a pilot construction for this project. Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Ware, we've completed a poll before you, for architectural services, and services here are all about establishing a program, project scope report, and very important, the project budget. Here are two sites, one on the airbase, site number one, a two-block downtown courts site. I'm going to briefly go through the scope of services on those two sites. Airbase Sheriff Administration Site, we're looking at merging the downtown Sheriff Administration, brickstone facility administration into a single building, preparing a combined program, developing site plan, departmental floor plan, and project budget, and then a 3D color rendering of that facility. We're also going to study the optimal placement of that building on the site to allow for the future growth of that building and a new jail in the future. The building will also encompass the operations of the county dispatch center within a tornado-proof room, and also disaster recovery site with the IT department. We're also going to program a master plan for the detention site for new mechanics garage facility and secure garages for inspection of seized vehicles. We're also going to meet with Jason at the IT department, make sure we have an understanding about what the needs are for IT at that site. Then we're also going to look, make sure we understand if any of the administration in the detention center building are displaced into the new facility, how we're going to use that space that's in the current building right now. Then on the downtown courts site, we're going to utilize the existing building program we have, that we developed the last couple of years for the district courts building, we're going to review that, make sure with the committee that that program is solid, nothing's going to change on it. We did do some reducing of that program during the systemic analysis that we did last year, which was really helpful, but we just want to look at it one more time, make sure if there's anything else we can get out of there, if the county decides they want to move somebody somewhere else, whether it's Santa Fe, we just want to know that so we can, you know, plan for the right building and budget. We're going to, on that building, also create conceptual floor plans and a site plan with parking, paving, landscaping, we're talking real conceptual, just so we can get a budget number, you know, we're not, these are all real, taken to a basic level. We're going to look at the possibility of connecting the current tunnel of the courthouse into parking, possibly underground, which may connect over into the district courts building also. And then also develop a 3D building stacking diagram of the district courts building, develop a 3D computer model also, give some kind of massing, a little bit of character, what that's going to look like. And you know, what we need to do to make sure we get the right budget on this too, we're going to be developing what I call a basis of design, I saw that mentioned in the proposal. What that is, is you know, the program, you know, a few years ago, we came up with square foot costs and development costs, real basic broad numbers, so we can make some decisions on, you know, what site to develop on the future. But we need to take that to a whole new level, this basic design, we're actually going to have a local guy, Shane with Apex Geo Science, he's going to give us some guidance from the different sites, what the soils are, and what kind of structure, the size of the building, that we should be building for. Our structural engineer is going to write a basic design for the structural, we're going to have an AEP engineer that's going to write the basis of design for the mechanic, but we're going to work with Mike and his group, facilities, and defining what systems go in the building, we're going to look at the civil aspects and needs of the project site, so we're going to develop a really solid budget for you on both these sites. Right now, our schedule for doing that is the end of June, we can have numbers for you, and we'll have the whole program and report then in the middle of July. So I think we got really, you know, nice type proposal here, to do some really good numbers, and a really good price to give to the budget, in terms of this year, and new facilities.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm following this proposal, the fixed flat amount of one hundred seventy-six thousand dollars for these services, is that correct?
That's correct, then, then the expenses too.
Okay, Carrie, where are we currently with our spending of Architexis? I know this is probably year three, maybe four of these conversations, so I, I want to say close to a million, but I may be incorrect.
Yeah, I think we had our previous master plan was a little over three hundred, we had another study for the district courts building, and we're getting issues with that building, and we had the systemic analysis, which was up twenty-seven thousand.
So we may be right around the eight hundred thousand dollar ranges, and the reason I bring that up is because obviously this has been a long time coming, and this court has put in a lot of expenditures to get us to a potential solution. A couple of comments that I would suggest, because I'm not part of the strategic planning committee, if I could ask that we obviously look at the unoccupied space in the Santa Fe building, roughly that's fifty percent unoccupied, which we found on our previous study. I also wanted to remind you on your budget proposal, we did receive, well, we, not physically, we haven't physically received, but we have been approved for some text stop funds for the streetscape.
Yes.
So I want to make sure that you're aware of that in your budget, and that obviously.
I saw there were tiers.
Oh, it's text stop. It's just some text stop, streetscape funds that the city received as well as the county, and it's only one corridor of the street, you can.
Is it Pierce?
Yeah, between, Ilmore and Pierce, text stop's good. Okay, so is that in addition to potential some tiers?
Yes, so that's, I wanted to bring that up in the tiers footprint, which I feel like you know about, but.
Yeah, part of this study too does include, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that, but not only the sheriff admin site, we're looking at the new district courts building though, but the sites to the north of that, which is the courthouse area, and that's where we can definitely do materials also, but that's great, we have some.
Yeah, and I can pass a lot of the contact information to Mike, of who that might be, to confirm the dollar amount and the requirements around that, but I did want to make sure you're aware of that. And then the county has recently approved an agreement for parking with the new parking garage and a hundred and fifty spots, so I felt like you knew that as well, but I wanted to share that.
I did, and I wasn't sure about the exact account, and that was really important, I was okay, because we had an account for both blocks, including courthouse, and now that's going to greatly reduce it, so that's really good, but we're going to fresh look at that, have that information, and look at the potential for growth, so you know, if we go with, you know, with parking over on the street. So, you know, if we go with, you know, parking over on the street, you know, across the street, we look at how much we need now and how much we need in the future. On the Santa Fe, real quick, I guess, and someone else wanted to help me here. We did look at that as a potential script for this proposal and then it was pulled. So it's not included right now. It was something that was discussed. So that's something I could make an adjustment on too.
And I'm not, and I'm not suggesting that we re-modify the proposal. I'm just saying to be mindful of as you're looking at square footage of what you're building for, I would like to think we could go to the taxpayers and say, as a result of X, Y, Z studies, we came up with a smaller footprint because we're allocating or reshifting of what we needed to build. So then the cost is less. That may be dreaming big, but.
No, no, I think that's a really good discussion to have to, you know, with committee or others just because, you know, we did, I think we have a pretty good feel for how much square footage is currently utilized in the Santa Fe building. I think I heard on the meeting today that some people might be moving in. So, you know, it'd probably be a good idea, you know, just part of the district courts planning program, just to make sure we have, everybody understands what's vacant over there, what the long-term goals are. And then, you know, if there's some shifting of space in the district courts building, that might reduce the square footage costs. You know, and this is all real important too. I know there's been a lot of studies here. But to get to this level of detail and understanding about basis of design and what you're going to get, I mean, we're, we're going to talk big picture here, but still have a good understanding, like outside of the building, the kind of materials and options we might be looking at. You know, whether it's stone, terracotta, specko, or whatever. And then, you know, flooring and public spaces and what quality materials those are versus the secondary spaces. Those kind of things are real important to establish the level of quality and budget. Then also, you know, just like the underground parking, ensuring which, and how much it is and where it's going. Is it above grounds, it's surface, underground? Those are the things that are real important so that in the next phase, when we get closer to you for those services, I can get really good proposals from you, solid role-defining scripts. People are putting contingencies in, so.
Well, at one time, we discussed putting the sheriff's office, sheriff admin in the Santa Fe building. That wasn't, that wasn't feasible, that leaves to one party. And then, and then we discussed, and then there was also another, a new office going under the 12th floor, is it 12th floor? The auto, the auto theft. But there's not that many people going to be there, about 10, 12 people. So Mike, that leaves how many floors?
It leaves the first floor, I mean, the second floor and a part of the third floor, if y'all move them around.
Yeah. Well, but see, these, we can't, we can't build a district courts building and then put half of them in the second body.
Right.
Can't separate.
There's not that much room either. I mean, that's the thing, is that you have to look at adjacency requirements, you know, exactly.
So then we talked at one time about leasing it out, leasing space out. And that's another whole.
I keep that space vacant. I just, for warning, use your place to move somebody here and need flexible space in the future.
You do need some flex space. I think it's a worthy discussion to have. Just kind of revisit the picture, make sure when we define the footprint and program, you know, it's not doing a study to say anything, but it's having a discussion about, you know, is it anything, if the building is the one that's studied right now, can be reduced or reflected by Santa Fe.
Larry and I discussed also the new district courts building, having the same outward appearance of the courthouse doors. So that we look and you can distinctly know that it's a county building.
Yeah. And I think that would be very appropriate too. I mean, they have some lines of forms that are all decked and shaped and real civic in nature. And, you know, a lot of wonderful buildings that county has here and I think this is a little more terracotta. And there's different ways you do terracotta in these lotteries. So.
Where's the recommendation for this fixed flat fee, is there a budget line up? I thought we had used the entire budget we had.
No, we just don't have.
Is there a little?
Yeah, there's plenty. So, so the recommendation is to consider an act upon allowing our Texas to go forward with this proposal for the two buildings, the sheriff admin and also the district courts and the green space. We discussed in the committee. Yes, on the fixed being on that, $6,000. Okay. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion sent. All in favor, please, your advocate.
Larry, I'll get you that information for the tax, I'll get you contact.
Number 16, fuel card program. To consider an act upon approving the interlocal agreement agreement to switch fuel card vendors to the current state of Texas contract.
This is the fuel cards that the sheriff's office use when they do transport, yeah, it's a agreement. And we currently have a vendor and we never switched to the new vendor with the state of Texas that has the contract on that. And because of our spend, I, I think we need to migrate to this new program. There, there's no cost to switch over. There's no additional cost in the new program. It's, it's ran almost identically. We just need to switch from our current vendor to the new vendor. There's not a contract with our current vendor, so I, we don't even have to cancel the contract. We just need to get off with the program and switch over. So that's what we.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
My motion is second, all in favor, if you can.
And I'll abstain for lack of any backup, lack of any relation on the agenda. I didn't have that. Did I have that?
Yes.
I don't.
I was stapled to this.
My backpack's all stapled together every single thing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have.
It's, it's on the backside. There it is.
I'll just keep my extension. I was not aware of that. We didn't have time to correct. Thank you.
Okay. Number 17, equipment purchase. To consider an act upon funding for the following hardware in relation to the case management software. A Dell storage in the amount of $49,000 and B Cisco networking equipment in the amount of $6,000.
This is the other half of the equipment that we purchased off the grant money. And this is funded from the, I can't hear more.
Carrie, I want to make sure we're referencing the right account for these purchases. I think it's capital projects, but for the equipment, the cap, the technology purchase.
Right. It, it will come out of the 1.1 million for the set size. And it was included in the Judge Jackson's.
I make a motion that we approve Dell storage in the amount of $49,089.29 and Cisco networking equipment in the $6,030. Funds to come from capital projects, technology account. Okay, okay.